9 is the local council tax support 2017/18. The report presents the final local council tax scheme for 2017/18 onwards to Cabinet for approval. Local council tax support was implemented in April 2013 to replace the national council tax benefit system. Section 4 of the report gives information on our current caseload and expenditure for council tax support, along with information on the number of claims for the hardship fund and the value of awards made. The scheme for 2017/18 must be approved by council by 1st 1st of January. Various technical changes to the scheme are proposed for next year, and a public consultation has been carried out on these changes. Thirteen responses were received and some of these are shown in Appendix A. The technical changes are required to ensure that the scheme is aligned with the National Housing Benefit Scheme. Section 5 of the report confirms the changes met required. An updated equalities impact assessment is shown at Appendix B, and the recommendations are set out in Section 2, and Cabinet are asked to recommend the scheme to council for approval. So again, there's an opportunity for everybody to discuss this again at full council. councillor Condarka.
Thank you Chair. I've always strongly opposed this council setting the level of minimum council tax at 20%. For working age people, this presents a problem to people on very low incomes, and I know we can't be able to set the level at 0%, but we are crazy at setting it at one of the highest amongst councils. We've done a consultation, and if you look at table 4.1, we have 10,500 people receiving the council tax support. Looking at the back, we had one person respond to the consultation who was actually in receipt of a council tax reduction. 10,500 people have actually got this benefit of some kind, and only one person responded to your consultation. The other 10 or so people who responded to the consultation aren't in receipt of this benefit. It's incredible. You have a benefit, and no one in receipt of the benefit is taking part in the consultation, because people do not know you're doing these consultations. This council does abhorrently seek consultations, and actually it tends to be the affluent people with time at hand that respond to them, and not the 10,500 people in receipt of this benefit. Looking at the hardship fund again, it's terribly crazy to have a £60,000 hardship fund, of which only £20,000 gets spent. We need to actually change this to actually we spend the £60,000. And this £60,000 is funded from the council tax collection fund. That means it's funded from the county council, the police, the fire, and we only pay effectively 13% of this £60,000. That's our contribution to the hardship fund. The hardship fund is in the collection fund, and that means this money we're actually giving people in the hardship fund is actually partly county council money, police precinct money, and 13% of our money. It's absolutely stupid not to keep this £60,000 in the borough, and try to give as many people in hardship an award of this fund as possible. And if you look at the table, £10,000 awarded to 133 people, it's not very much per person. Yeah, and there's 60 odd people who have refused hardship. Yeah, we aren't getting this fund to the right people, and it isn't working. Thank you Chair.
Okay, all the questions councillor Condarka? Thank you very much. Do we, do we have any member who wants to speak? Would they be happy to agree the report before us? Thank you. And I would hope then, in terms of talking to people, and in terms of this, people who actually are claimants, and whether they then choose to put in a point of view is up to them. Borough Plan Working Party councillor Aldington.
Thank you Chair. The report before you asks Cabinet to consider the composition of the Borough Plan Working Party following Borough elections earlier in the year. When the Working Party was first established, it was decided that the make-up of the group should reflect the party proportions of the council. On this basis, there is a need to amend the current composition of the Working Party to maintain proportion of representation. Therefore, propose that the composition of the Working Party be changed to Six Labour, which includes the portfolio holder for planning and development, and two Conservatives. Chair, there's been a lot of misinformation said and written about the Borough Plan Working Party, so I thought it might be useful for Cabinet members just to have a little bit of a potted history on the Borough Plan Working Party. So it was set up in November 2007. Membership was based on party proportions, with four representatives from Labour and two from the Conservatives. In July 2014, the composition of the Working Party was reviewed again following those Borough elections that year, and the composition was changed to Six Labour, one Conservative, and one member of the Alternative Group formed to provide effective opposition to unfair Borough Plan. The Working Party has always been chaired by the portfolio holder for planning and development, both when the Labour Group and the Conservatives between 2008 and 2010 were in control. Agendas are circulated prior to meetings, and notes taken at the meeting which are then distributed to attendees afterwards. They are technically notes rather than minutes because of the status of the Working Party. I've got the terms of reference here Chair, and it's useful again to know what the terms of reference are for the Borough Plan Working Party. So, to have an understanding of the content for and content of the Borough Plan, to consider and monitor the project plan for the development of the Borough Plan up to the submission of the plan, to consider and monitor the resources available to implement the project plan, to consider consultation arrangements at the appropriate stages of the programme, where appropriate seek the views of their party groups on particular issues and options. And to do with meetings, there's no delegated decision-making powers, so no need for a quorum. As you know Chair, there are only two decision-making bodies of this council, one of them we're sitting in here tonight, the other one we've got next Wednesday, which is the full council. So I thought it's useful just to have a little bit of a background to what the Borough Plan Working Party was and still currently is.
Okay, thank you. I'd just more slightly correct you that there are two regulatory committees on the licenceing of the planning. So, I've got three speakers on this, Mr Foster, Mr Mayor, and councillor Condarka. So Mr Foster.
Thank you Chair.
Could I just remind the speakers that all we're discussing is the make-up of the Borough Plan Working Party, not the Borough Plan? That's all that's on the agenda.
Please certainly speak, our members would probably go.
About the Borough Plan Working...
Item 10, which is to update the composition of the Borough Plan Working Party, is already overdue by six months, while the Borough Plan itself is 10 years late. The creation of an uninspected floor plan has given developers an excuse to build in unsuitable areas where legislation does not forbid it, while most parts of Warwickshire is protected by Greenbelt areas which are watched over carefully by organisations, such as Campaign for Protection of Rural England. Nuneaton countryside is not so well protected. The opportunity should have been taken in 1971 by the council at that time, when the M6 and the junction 3 Bedworth bypass were built on Greenbelt land to create a home building zone where highway infrastructure was already in place. Earlier this month, the organisation Client Earth won a high court action against the UK government for not following EU regulation on air quality. This will result in new legislation which is currently in progress. Conger Council is considering the creation of a pollution zone around the city, as already been done in other cities in the UK, following the London and Paris standards last year to exclude damaging diesel vehicles. On the 18th of July 2016, Public Health Warwickshire gave a briefing on the key issues regarding air quality in Warwickshire, and will be following that with a task and finish report shortly. The Committee on the Medical Effects of Air Pollution, COMIAP, will eventually report to show the serious effect which diesel emissions have on public health and will result in very high death rates. I hear from reports from the Borough Council that new vehicles will eventually create mitigation for the very high levels of nitric oxide in our IQMA areas. This is clearly not the case, as seen over the last eight years or so. That reason is still being given to the future, yet that will take decades to arrive. The damaging molecules from diesel fuel emissions, wrongfully described as particulates, are not being measured by the main council here, and are probably not easily measured, perhaps. While the Jaguar plan to build battery vehicles locally is excellent, their diesel vehicles still being launched, along with other motor manufacturers, will continue to create air pollution. Air fuel tax on diesel will eventually curb its use and eliminate it. In the meantime, I would urge the Borough Council to begin to introduce the necessary measures into its planning policy, which it hasn't done, to avoid building which will aggravate the problem, and to work together with others...
Thank you, Mr Foster.
...to work together with others to provide the highways infrastructure necessary.
Thank you, Mr Foster. Thank you, councillor Condarka. Could I just ask you a simple, because I was very lenient with you there, the issue is about the make-up of the Borough Plan Working Party on the agenda. This is all that's on the agenda. Could I ask you, do you have a view on the composition of the Borough Plan Working Party?
Yes, I personally wouldn't have attended that party. I was down, there were only three Conservatives, and I was outnumbered 2 to 1.
I'm talking about, do you think that the Conservatives should attend the Borough Plan Working Party then?
Of course they should.
Thank you.
Democracy.
Okay, any other questions?
I can ask those questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr Mayor.
Thanks very much. My name's Carl Mair from the Woodlands Action Group. I've come along tonight to see what happens regarding the Borough Plan Working Party. Some compromise needs to be reached by all concerned, because as it stands, the committee is a complete joke, with secret meetings in the dark, which at the moment must make it the most undemocratic committee in the country, with all sides saying it's your fault. Please, can you knock your heads together and sort it out for the right players of the borough, if nothing else? Also, as someone who has been involved in the planning process for some years, I must say that the public consultation undertaken 12 months ago has still not been released to the public for them to see the council's response. This is outrageous. Even more so, having found out earlier this year that this council spent over £10,000 on a private company to do a job that should be done by this council's planning department. The whole local plan and its process over the last 10 years has been a giant game of hide-and-seek, which in the Action Group's view leaves a very bad taste in the mouth of democracy.
Any questions? Mr Mayor?
I've got a question, Chair.
Okay.
So in light of that, Mr Mayor, because we're talking about, all we're talking about here is the composition of the Borough Plan Working Party. Would you suggest, and would you urge, your local Conservative council, which I know you helped during the elections, attend the Borough Plan Working Party? Would you urge him to do that? Because it's not a committee, Mr Mayor.
If it was an open, if it was an open thing, same old issue, yes.
Just to say, I'm just going on that. It's not a committee, Mr Mayor, it's a Borough Plan Working Party to help officers when they actually compile their report that comes to either the Cabinet or the council. They are the open democratic...
Can any member of the public read the minutes to that?
Sorry, we can't have a discussion here.
Well, he's just asked me a question, I'm pretty sure I can answer it.
It's quite simple, the rule is that...
Yeah, I would tell him, yes, he should go, as long as the public can find out what's going on, rather than it being in the dark, and then you find out like we did, that the Woodlands had been chucked into the plan without telling anybody. All right, yeah.
We've now got a third councillor, councillor Condarka. I'll repeat what I've said to other people, and I'm sure you'll redress them, that this item is about the composition of the Borough Plan Working Party.
Thank you for that advice Chair. I was going to talk about the Borough Plan Working Party, which I was on until the last election. This should have been sorted six months ago. It's appalling, this is not recalling. We should have had a Working Party meeting a year ago when you're designing the Borough Plan, not now. The Borough Plan will be released in a couple of weeks, and a Working Party can do absolutely nothing to influence it. Consultants have been hired to read responses to the last consultation, different consultants have been employed to produce the next version of the plan, and we have absolutely no ability to have a say in it. A Working Party will be an absolute total waste of time. What I've asked the managing director for is a seminar at which councillors can be told about the Borough Plan and can discuss it, not a Working Party, because no work can be done. The plan has been cooked up by Kelly Ford, by the portfolio holder, and consultants. We've got no idea what proportion of the work was done, we have no ability to ask them decent questions. When we ask the portfolio holder questions at full council, he just gives one word answers like 'no'. This is an absolute shambles, the Working Party is a sham, and we actually need proper scrutiny. There has not been a single scrutiny meeting about the Borough Plan in detail for many, many years. It is 10 years later, it's probably cost us £3 million, and a Working Party now, what's it going to do? It's going to be an opportunity for Labour councils to be given two weeks' advance notice of what's in it, but it's not going to do anything useful for the borough. This borough is losing working age population. The working age population has dropped 2,000 in the last four years. It's losing employment, we have the lowest employment ratio in the area. This borough is in a total mess, and holding a Working Party in secret for a plan that's been drilled up by developers' friends is totally useless. We need an open democratic Borough Plan. This plan is going to be absolutely appalling, get it out of the way as quickly as possible, let me and Carl and everyone go to the inquiry, show you what we're grossing competent, and then we'll have to start a new plan.
Before I ask people to ask questions, councillor, could I say, you can in public or in private make as many insulting comments to other politicians as you wish, and of course you regularly do, but I think it's totally inappropriate that you make slanderous statements about officers of the council who are not allied to political parties when you say such things as 'the Borough Plan has been cooked up by Kelly Ford'. Kelly Ford is not able to defend herself, and I will just make that point, that she is an officer of the council, and such a statement should not be made in a meeting which has been, by a councillor, in a meeting which has been filmed in particular.
What we should do, Chair, is have scrutiny, we should ask Kelly Ford questions.
I'm just making that point councillor, there is a difference between throwing insults at all of us as politicians and slandering people who are not aware of this as a council, paid to do a job which shows no fear or favour politically. Do we have any questions to councillor Condarka about what he's said?
Thank you Chair. Councillor Condarka, do you sit on a scrutiny panel?
I do, I sit on two scrutiny panels.
Do any of the Cabinet sit on a scrutiny panel?
No.
No, so we cannot take anything to scrutiny, thank you.
Your party members...
Sorry, sorry. The Cabinet is not allowed by law to sit on a scrutiny panel.
Now you shall choose what you want to give.
Okay, we've got the issue, thank you councillor, we've got the issue before us which asks us to appoint two Conservatives, for the Conservatives to give us two members for the Borough Plan Working Party. That is completely up to them of course, but they are invited to take part as they are the official opposition. There has been a change since the elections in terms of status, and they are now clearly a larger party and become the official opposition, and we only ask, as we do with all our bodies except the Cabinet, that there is proportionality in the constitution, and so we ask the Conservative Party to appoint two people. I would reiterate what councillor Aldington said, that in fact the Borough Plan Working Party discusses recommendations etc. They do not make a decision, those decisions are made by Cabinet and full council, full council, everybody has one vote. I have one vote, the councillors here have one vote, and every single councillor from every party has one vote. That's the way the decisions are actually reached. Are we in agreement that this, the composition is amended to comprise six representatives from the Labour Group plus two substitutes, and two representatives from the Conservative Group plus one substitute? Do we agree? The eight-yearly powers act 2000, and now come to councillor Conver.
Thank you Chair. This is, we're going to have to approve the council policy on use of the statements that are similar to this piece of legislation. This is a result of an inspection of our procedures I set up here which took place last year, and the policy which we are considering now was reviewed by the economic authority for RNS a couple of months ago, and this is a follow-on inspection. Basically, what the inspectorate wants us to do, and what we're going to do, is that the director of governance and recreation will now be designated the senior responsible officer, and the person, the co-ordinating officer for the regulation of investigative powers act will now be a council solicitor, as the director will be coming, the senior responsible officer. Turning forward, the appropriate offices have all been taken place in July. One other change in the way we manage this, the implementation of this piece of legislation, is the directors of asset and street services and business improvement are now authorising offices.
Councillor Condarka.
Thank you Chair, just one thing, related things I want to mention. This council does an awful lot of watching my Facebook and Twitter feeds, and continues to text me to standard hearings to various things, and part of the investigative powers and regulatory thing covers social media and the internet. This council seems far more interested actually in what I do and spending away hassling me than it does actually investigating fly tipping and other areas of criminal activity. This council is very reluctant to actually use its regulatory powers, except it seems to actually investigate investigations and standard inquiries into my conduct. Thank you Chair.
Can I just ask you a question? You took your offices at the council, because I've never once looked at your Twitter or Facebook account.
I am not able to know who looks it. When I get an official complaint against me, it is said that someone saw this on the Facebook. I do not know whether Labour Party members, council officers, or yeah, who's doing it. I just want to remind them that these powers do cover the council employees monitoring my internet activities.
A question to councillor Conver.
So what evidence have you got for making the accusations you've just made? What evidence is there that council officers' time is being spent looking at your Twitter account?
Well, I go to various standards meetings when I'm obviously the first in trouble with standards, because of what I've been on, usually Facebook.
I ask you what evidence you've got that officers of this council are monitoring your Twitter account?
And I'm required, because you put all my standards hearings on pink paper to keep that secret.
Well, we'll take it as if you haven't got any. Okay, thank you.
No, can I release it there?
Can I just say councillor, you know, we have a proper procedure for standards committee, people are entitled to make complaints to the standards committee, and their hearings are normally in private, but I don't know what you're referring to, because I do not get the paperwork. I do not get the paperwork as councillor either. I want to make that very clear.
Chair, I have to declare that I sit on the standards committee.
Right, any more questions to get? It must be a question to councillor Condarka. Right, okay. I'll go back then to this particular item. Do we have any member who wishes to speak on this particular item? No? Are we agreed then with... Yes? We are then, we, 12 will be found out, which is a review of parliamentary constituency boundaries in England again. I have to say at the beginning, as I say again, because many of us have lived through more changes in the parliamentary boundary constituency, if I was to put forward one way of saving money, it might be to abolish the Boundary Commission, because the changes that we have had to have in terms of constituencies, particularly for Nuneaton and Bedworth, is ludicrous. At our last meeting, the Cabinet requested further information regarding the proposed review of the Nuneaton constituency following receipt of the report from the Boundary Commission for England, which I have to say, put into the Nuneaton constituency areas that I'd actually never even heard of, and certainly never visited. This report now brings forward three options for this committee to consider. Option A is to form one constituency as it was in 1974, and for many years afterwards, of Nuneaton and Bedworth, which is coterminous with the Borough Council Boundary. Option B is all wards of Nuneaton be retained, and three wards of Bedworth, Slough, Bead and Poplar. Option C is to accept the Boundary Commission's proposals as detailed in their consultation document. The Cabinet are asked to give their preferred option along with the reasons, and the committee's decision will be conveyed to the Boundary Commission before December 5. I am going to, as Chair, recommend that we support option A, Nuneaton and Bedworth, form one constituency. This was extremely successful during the years it operated. I am sure we shall be told that the numbers are now above the average for England and Wales in terms of Nuneaton and Bedworth. Would I ask you not to shout from the back face? But in fact, this was the one that everybody understood. Everybody in Nuneaton and Bedworth knew which constituency they lived in, they knew who was their MP, and they knew where the boundary was. Our numbers have not increased that much to make that sort of difference. To go along with proposals that split Bedworth up all over the place, and give Nuneaton areas of Warwickshire, which as I say, I've never heard of, and I'm sure other people are in the same boat, is absolutely ridiculous. At the present time, we have a similarly ludicrous situation. We have a Nuneaton constituency that includes parts of North Warwickshire, we have a North Warwickshire constituency, that's the official title, which includes most of Bedworth, and we have a Rugby constituency which includes Bulkington, much to the annoyance of the people of Bulkington, who feel they have nothing to do with Rugby. So, from the council's point of view, and I'm sure from the general public's point of view, let's go back to having an MP from Nuneaton and Bedworth. We all would know where we stand, we all would know who was our MP, and we all would know which area that MP was then meant to stand up for. Because I heard for instance this afternoon, I'm going to talk a bit, from an outside organisation, about one of our MPs who always stands up for another town. And when I pointed out that part of our borough was actually in that constituency, oh yes, they said, they were very surprised that that part, because the MP is not known for standing up for that part. Going back to Nuneaton and Bedworth, one MP, clear to everybody, greater public involvement, clarity all round, it's fairer, and there are exceptions around the country where... clarity all round, is fairer, and there are exceptions around the country where the numbers are increased to allow for this, and I'm sure this will be what Nuneaton and Bedworth people think. Yes, councillor Condarco? Don't worry, I know you want to speak about every item, whatever it turns out.
Thank you very much, Chair. MPs are really important. Yeah, I've never voted for a Tory budget, and I'm not particularly a Tory supporter. I would love us to have a variety of MPs, because actually I think one party having too much power is dreadful, and actually, we should have a proportional system to elect MPs. If we had such a system, we'd have 25 Green MPs in Parliament, which would be marvellous. As it stands, having one ginormous constituency for Nuneaton and Bedworth is liable to produce, I suspect you hope, a Labour MP, which is going to produce very little scrutiny of a Labour council. It actually is difficult, what do I want, Tory MPs, Labour MPs? It's really hard. Maybe one of each, Green MP would be far better, but your proposal is absolutely ridiculous. The less MPs we have, the less we're going to have in Parliament. So, having two MPs, even if it's one Labour, one Tory, gives you more of a voice than having one Labour or one Tory MP. Having MPs for the whole town isn't going to stand up to, cut to the Georgia Hospital, as well as having two MPs. I would love to have six MPs for Nuneaton. The more MPs you get, the more influence you get in Parliament, so having one MP is a stupid statement. And if you look at the size of the Borough, the Borough is growing very slowly. If you look at the ward sizes, waiting to 5,700, some of these wards, less than 5,000 voters in a ward, we aren't growing, and you've got lots of issues. Gerrymandering the MP is not going to help. Thank you, Chair.
Are there questions that... Well, I've got a question, councillor. You said that we have two MPs that represent Nuneaton and Bedworth, are you aware of the proportion of the constituencies that fall within Nuneaton and Bedworth of the three MPs we currently have?
Yes, I am, Chair, I've actually travelled the whole length of the Nuneaton constituency, so I know, I've actually cycled to the end of it, down to their furthest end. I know the Nuneaton constituency really well, and I know that Bulkington is in the Rugby constituency.
And that Coles Hill is in the North Warwickshire constituency? You didn't, you haven't mentioned Bedworth here, but Coles Hill is in North Warwickshire constituency.
Yeah, I did, lots of other places.
Yeah, I think it goes in further than Coles Hill, doesn't it? But we don't have any MP that just represents this, any part of this Borough, just represents any part.
Yeah, we have three that represent part of.
Exactly, thank you very much.
So, you would advocate splitting up Nuneaton and Bedworth so that it was perhaps in six or seven different constituencies, now we'd have six or seven different MPs?
I think that would be difficult.
Oh, right.
But the, having two, well, having one whole MP, two halves, one and a half, having a bigger voice in Parliament is important, and as the population of other parts of Warwickshire grows with success, Warwick will soon be bigger than Nuneaton and Bedworth for the council, and it's successful, and its population's growing, we're going to get less and less influence, part of the downward spiral.
So, I take that as it, is that a yes or a no then?
I would love to have six MPs, whatever, one of them could be a Green then.
Thank you, councillor Condarco. Well, I've put forward my recommendation to you, did anybody want to speak about that?
Yes, Chair. I'm old enough to remember the Lesfield building thing for this constituency, and I think so, I remember the boundary changes before this one, taking in all these Rugby areas, and a local government, and the MP, could be in those areas, and what disaster that was. Absolutely totally ridiculous disaster, the people who started the ship did not want to know, basically, they didn't have any sort of affinity with this Borough at all, and yet we've got people two miles down the road in Bedworth who were not part of the Nuneaton situation. But we did have another MP, Michael Ryan, who was representing the North Warwickshire area, so it was a comparison opportunity, a good call, or working together. To actually come up with a suggestion that we want to gerrymander this is an absolute nonsense. It smacks of somebody who hasn't got a clue about what they're talking about. Because the Boundary Commission, they're supposed to be independent, will make the decision at the end of the day, they did it on the county boundaries, they made the mistake of making two member wards at one point, just simply because they could do it, they did it, not for any geographical or logical reason, they just did it. And the Tory government wants to dump 50 MPs out of the Houses of Parliament, that's what this is all about, that's why we get the much we get in, and it's gerrymandering of the worst sort by the Tory party to actually keep their majority in the House of Commons. It's nothing to do with where people live or how they react, people of this Borough love this Borough as Nuneaton and Bedworth, and therefore, they should have, otherwise, one MP to represent the interests in Parliament of this Borough, and not be peeled off on little bits and pieces. Anybody who suggests otherwise does not know the people of this Borough, and to make suggestions that have been made is absolute nonsense.
But you won't put it to a referendum.
Somebody who doesn't know what they're talking about.
Councillor Condarco? Yes, I mean, one of the effects of all these changes which the last governments put the Boundary Commission to implement, is the watering down of the representation of people who live in urban areas. We've talked a lot about housing and all that stuff, and how little green space we've got, that's because Nuneaton and Bedworth is an urban area. That's my first point. This is Nuneaton and Bedworth Borough Council, not the Green Party, not the Labour Party, we're making a recommendation on the basis of being Nuneaton and Bedworth Borough Council. We think the interests of the people of Nuneaton and Bedworth are best served by having one MP who will stick up for us. That's the beginning and end of it as far as I'm concerned, it probably won't get elected, certainly won't be accepted, but that is not what we're here to consider, it's what would best serve the people, the interests of the people who live in our Borough. And I'd say that if I lived in Coventry or anywhere else, having a few fields tacked on to your town is not serving the interests of the people of this Borough, nor is it, in fact, serving the interests of the people who live in those villages and hamlets. So, I would definitely support him, that we go for option B. Don't worry, you haven't put it, you haven't just yet, councillor. At the end of the day, I'd be wrong if I said, I look to be politically, I'd be absolutely wrong, you do, of course, all parties do, but at the end of the day, politics are sorry, if you look at the make-up of Nuneaton and Bedworth, and the make-up of North Warwickshire, and the make-up of Nuneaton as a constituency, however you look at it, the three make-ups, they're very, very similar. They're not going to be a safe Labour seat, or safe Conservative seat, they're marginal, they're going to be the same as what they are now. So, it's not, to me, it's not about politics, it's about doing what's right for the people of this Borough. And I think, and I believe, they are right, and I believe is right, that we have one constituency, one MP across Nuneaton and Bedworth, instead of being split between three or maybe four MPs, it's wrong. People know who their MP is, there's always issues every election, you get it, whether you're in Nuneaton, or whether you're in Bedworth, or whether you're in North Warwickshire, are people knowing who their MP is? Yes, at the end of the day, it's up to the politics to go out there and sell their individuals so that people know. At the end of the day, it's not about politics. As I say, if you look at those three seats, you know, Nuneaton and Bedworth, versus Nuneaton versus North Warwickshire, they're all marginal, they're marginal now, they'll be marginal then, there'll be no difference whatsoever, and the difference is you have one MP who is in this Borough who will know exactly who their MP is, it's as simple as that. Councillor? Just in terms of what was said earlier, you know, it was suggested that, by councillor Condarco, that it was, it's expected it would produce a Labour MP, which I presumably suspect that most people have worked Labour in Nuneaton and Bedworth, which is contrary to what's been said throughout the rest of the meeting. However, that is not always the case, and the Conservatives have in the past had, have had the majority of the popular vote, and the popular vote in Nuneaton and Bedworth, the same as Labour, I have to say, the Greens have never had the majority of the popular vote, but it's sometimes been Labour, it's sometimes been Conservative, and it's not a case of who it favours politically, because I'm sure nationally, the Labour Party will work out all sorts of figures about, what needs to be moved here and moved there. At the end of the day, this is about proper community representation, and while I might enjoy it sometimes, delivering leaflets in Binley Woods, as I used to have to do years ago, and I would have to do again under this proposal, you know, I'll have to set the sat nav this time, it's easier to find, you know, they don't get very keen on being in with Nuneaton, most of them have never been here, and similarly, with, well, Bedworth's, it's focused on Nuneaton here, similarly, Bedworth's split all over the place, and, you know, people in Nuneaton and Bedworth want an MP for Nuneaton and Bedworth, and... That is, that is... Sorry, I know that it's difficult to maintain good manners when we haven't got it expressed elsewhere in the room, but can we please, I'm going to put that forward, it's been seconded, I take it it's been seconded, the Nuneaton and Bedworth, yes? Is there any other proposal? All those in favour of going for a Nuneaton and Bedworth MP? Okay, thank you very much, and that'll be forwarded to the...
You will.
Thank you. And just to say that, you know, this Cabinet report is obviously a public report, people have had their opportunity, other parties to send in their suggestions, and they have their opportunity to send in to the Boundary Commission what they want to send in, totally independently from this, it's not the council that makes the decision. Are there no recommendations?